Hello and welcome everybody to this meeting. This is the Development Plan Panel Meeting. My name's councillor Hannah Biffle and for the first five or six minutes I'll be chairing, just while councillor Caroline Groan, who is our regular chair, manages to make it in. Today's meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves? If we could start from my left?
Thank you Chair. Martin Elliott, Head of Strategic Planning.
Yes, Richard Marsh, Senior Nature Conservation Officer.
Good afternoon, councillor Peter Carroll, Cavillian Farley Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Jim McKenna from the Armley Ward.
Good afternoon, Kayleigh Brooks, councillor for Little London Woodhouse Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Barry Anderson, Adley Wharfdale Ward.
Good afternoon Toby Russell-Clark to the panel.
Good afternoon, Nicky O, legal adviser to the panel today.
Good afternoon, Davy Feeley, Chief Planning Officer for Leeds.
Good afternoon, Victoria Hinchcliffe-Walker, Group Manager for the Environment and Design Group.
Lovely, thank you very much everyone. If I could now ask Toby to run through items one to five?
Thank you Chair. Under Agenda Item Number One, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under Item Number Two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press and the public. Under Item Number Three, there are no items noted. Under Item Number Four, can I ask members to declare any interests they may have? Thank you. And under Item Number Five, apologies have been received from councillor Carter and councillor Campbell, and I believe we're still waiting for councillors Finnegan, Hayden, Actar and Groan. Thank you Chair.
Thanks very much. So we'll move to item number six, which is the minutes from the previous meeting held on the 4th April 2023. Do members accept these minutes are a true and correct record? Yeah, thank you councillor Anderson, unseconded, thank you. I'll assume those are correct. Would you like to come in now? Okay, in which case we'll move to matters arising, and are there any matters arising from the minutes? Martin?
I'm happy to defer to councillor Anderson if he wishes to come in.
Hopefully we can minute. We have requested a number of previous panel meetings that we get information on student numbers and student accommodation. And councillor Groan at the last meeting confirmed that she would try and include it in forthcoming development plan agenda. I just wanted to get it on the agenda so that we can then follow it up because we've, a number of us have been asking for this information for some time. And it's just to put it formally there, it's not to make an issue of it, nor to debate it like we did the last time either. But just to make the point so it's recorded for, so that we can keep following it up as to why we've got it or not got it as the case may be.
Thanks councillor Anderson. Martin?
Thank you Chair. Just in terms of the co-living item that was discussed at the last DPP, members did raise quite a lot of detailed points about that, which you can see are reflected in the minutes. What officers have done is they've revised that note and members were clear at DPP that they wanted to see that note again. So it's the intention to circulate that note to DPP members and invite comment back. So expect an email to come from me and I'd be grateful for any comments received and I'll set out clear timeframes in the email when I send it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final matters arising? Alrighty then, thank you. In which case we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the biodiversity and nature recovery update. If I can ask officers to provide the update and presentation?
Thank you Chair, I'll kick off. But we have Vicky Hinchcliffe-Walker, Group Manager for Environment and Design Group, and we also have Richard Marsh, who's our Senior Nature Conservation Officer, who can field any detailed questions or questions of clarity. So biodiversity and nature recovery, we felt it was timely to bring an update to this panel because quite a lot has changed around these topics in recent years, stimulated largely by the Environment Act, which was enacted in 2021, and which will kick in a requirement, a mandatory requirement for what's called biodiversity net gain from November this year. But we also have, as a result of that act, something called local nature recovery strategies, which are now active or starting to be in process within West Yorkshire. So just turning to the report, there's a bit at the beginning, powers one through to five, which just sets out the context really for why biodiversity and protection of biodiversity is important. It supports much of the district, but not only in terms of sort of plants and animals, but also humans by providing what's known as ecosystems services. And it's also important for us as we consider the impact of climate change, because climate change adaptation isn't just about how humans will adapt to the climate, it's about how different species of animals and plants adapt as well. So it is significant and really important that we understand the need to recover biodiversity, because as the report sets out, it has suffered quite considerably against a number of measures, not just within Leeds, but nationally over recent years. And that in power six really is why the government's 25-year environment plan and the consequent Environment Act that emerged from that plan are really important, because that's the government's response to how to restore nature within the country. In powers seven and eight, we've set out what the current planning policies are around biodiversity, and there are two that are significant. The first is around protection of habitats and species, which helps guide development away from those areas where, which are most precious in terms of the natural environment. But also Policy G9, which already seeks an overall net gain for biodiversity. That means that where development is inevitable on a piece of land, and it does impact upon biodiversity, there will be a calculation made so that the resulting either development or any off-site works will leave that biodiversity in no worser condition, and indeed a marginal net improvement than before development started. Now, the biodiversity net gain contained within the Environment Act goes further than that, and it says that that biodiversity net gain should be equal to 10%. So if there is impacts on biodiversity through development, there should be a 10% proportionate increase in biodiversity. The power eight sets out that the emerging local plan update, of which members will be aware, has the theme of biodiversity running through it under its green and blue infrastructure section. And that's looking to strengthen the policies that we have in the plan and take account of the changes emerging through the Environment Act. Powers nine through to 11 set out the existing work that's carried out within Leeds on biodiversity and through the sort of the quite long in the tooth biodiversity action plan now, but also in terms of the management of the designated sites we have in Leeds, and also the 14 local nature reserves, and the work that's going on around the net zero challenge in terms of tree planting. But in terms of biodiversity net gain, the impacts of that will be mainly twofold. The first will be an impact on the amount of technical scrutiny that biodiversity receives through the planning system at planning application stage. And the second will be the opportunity for the council to act as a broker to sell what are known as biodiversity units to developers to allow them to fulfil their obligations around biodiversity. So by that I mean that the Environment Act sets out a system by which biodiversity net gain will be achieved through something called habitat banks, whereby a calculation on the impact of the biodiversity from the development will be made at the planning application stage. And then there will be a calculation as to whether that can be remedied on site, which if you think about it, if there's going to be development happening on a site, it's unlikely that that will be able to remedy all of the biodiversity impact plus 10%. Or, as the government says, allow it to go off-site. And it's that off-site contribution that is generating the council thinking about how it can sell biodiversity units to developers and what that means for improvement of biodiversity more widely. Because on selling those units, the council would obviously get some income to be spent on biodiversity improvement. And the rest of the paper sets out how that would work. In thinking about how to implement the Environment Act, powers 17 sort of sets out the work that the Strategic Planning Service has been engaged in, not just within the council, but also working across West Yorkshire with other local authorities, because this will be mandatory across all local authorities in England, to think about how best to deal with this. And the resulting system is set out in some, in the remainder of the paper. And it sets out that largely what will happen is there will be a, the best way to think about it is a matchmaking map, which will highlight to developers where opportunities for biodiversity improvement within the city can occur. And that will stimulate a conversation between developers and the council on how best to deliver those through the planning system. The detailed calculations that will occur at the planning application stage are important, because they will decide what type of units are being sought. They will use a government metric. So it won't be possible to affect one type of biodiversity, for example, grassland, and one type of habitat, and replace that with a completely different type of biodiversity, which might be woodland cover, for example. You'd have to be replacing like for like in terms of what was affected on the development site with what is going to be provided. The approach which is set out in some in powers 19 through to 23, and in more detail in appendix, in appendix three, requires the matchmaking map, engagement at a pre-application stage with the planning department about the likely impacts of the development, and understanding as to whether or not the developer is choosing to use the council as a habitat bank and as a habitat broker, because there's no obligation on developers to do so. There will be a market out there where other environment banks can actually sell biodiversity units to developers. And then, once the council has determined whether or not it will be active in terms of managing those biodiversity units, then there will be a habitat delivery partner identified within the council. Now that could be Climate, Energy and Green Spaces, the department formerly known as Parks and Countryside, in terms of the management of the land that they own and operate. It could be asset management, it could be flood risk management, it could be highways, depending on the sorts of biodiversity, what sorts of improvements are being sought, and the land to be improved. There then follows quite a detailed and technical approach to monitoring, managing and reporting on that biodiversity improvement, which is set out in appendix three. And these are responsibilities that the council has. They are responsibilities that the council will take a proportion of any biodiversity monies for in order to support and fund those activities. And those activities will last for a period of 30 years from the delivery of the biodiversity. So in sum, that's biodiversity net gain, and happy to take questions on that. But members will clearly appreciate, I think, the impact that's going to have on planning decision taking within the council. The second part of the paper just sets out in some powers 24 to 26, the local nature recovery strategies. And this was another aspect of the Environment Bill, where the government committed to a nature recovery network across England, which was important to not only reflect the state of the key designations that we have within the country, but also to reflect on what that means now we're in a post Brexit world, and various bits of European legislation now no longer apply to nature conservation. So DEFRA require LNRSs, and DEFRA have declared responsible authorities across the country for the 50 odd local nature recovery strategies. And our responsible authority is the West Yorkshire Combined Authority. So we are working quite closely with the Combined Authority to draw up the local nature recovery strategy, which will set out a map around the importance of biodiversity across the five West Yorkshire authorities, but also a statement of key biodiversity priorities that will be important, not only for West Yorkshire, but also for the council as well. You'll see in power 25, the makeup of the steering group that's currently steering that production of the LNRSs. And under land use planning, you'll see Leeds City Council there, and that's actually myself. I sit on that steering group and I represent the planning process within that steering group. But Richard Marsh also feeds in through the local government ecologists to that steering group as well. So quite a bit to go out there. Happy to take questions from members.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. And thank you for bearing with me being late. It has enabled me to attend the funeral of a very longstanding resident in my ward, which I'm sure you'll agree is a councillor's duty. So thank you for that. And I will take the chair over, although I haven't, of course, heard Martin's presentation. I have had a briefing and of course I've read the papers. So can we invite questions and comments please? Councillor Anderson, I saw first, councillor Carlin, and then councillor Brooks.
That's better. Right, yeah. I'll try and be quick. Right, obviously the preferred option is that we get it done on site, fine. But if we do have to start going down, getting, selling units, etc., who decides the price, the pounds, shilling and pence, in old language as far as I'm concerned? Who actually decides, you know, what the value of each unit is and how do they pay? Is it on a sliding scale? So for example, certain areas of the city will attract a higher rate? And who calculates that? So that's on that one. Now, going back to appendix one, which talks about the number of staff that the council may require, can we look for economies of scale? In other words, could we be the body for the whole of West Yorkshire, and then the other West Yorkshire councils effectively pay in to our service so that we can then get some funding as a result of that, and it defrays the cost? Or is that just an absolute no-goer? And is there any capacity to recharge the costs in appendix one back to a developer? You know, if in other words, if someone's a major developer, can they, can we get any of that money back from them? And can you expand upon the role of WAICA? Because I understood that the government were trying not to have a lot of planning issues being dealt with by WAICA, but leaving it with the local planning authorities to have responsibility, because getting political working together isn't always the greatest thing in the world. And so how we're getting by on that? And the final thing I have is, under what are the key risks and how are they managed? That's paragraph 31. Who will be responsible for carrying out the financial monitoring? And where is that reported back to? If you under, I'll repeat any of them if I've gone too far, but that's mine.
Right, thank you Barry. We'll take one issue at a time. And if Martin does overlook any, I'm sure you'll come in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those questions councillor Anderson. The first one was around the cost of the biodiversity unit. Well, the way BNG is going to operate is it's up to the private market to determine what the cost is. So we're not aware of what cost the Environment Bank are charging, and whether that will differ across the district, I doubt it. All we would be under control of is if as the council were selling biodiversity units, we determine then what that level is. But we have to be very mindful, if we set the level too high as a cost, the developers would normally go elsewhere, wouldn't they, to the private market? And we don't know yet at what level the private market is operating. We'll know more after November, no doubt. The way we're choosing to operate it is one standard cost across the whole of the district. Does that answer the first question? Moving on to the second one, I'll try and answer that one. That was to do with economies of scale working at a West Yorkshire level. There's different elements of BNG. If we're talking about the scrutiny of planning applications, like the role I do, the other four districts in West Yorkshire do employ planning ecologists themselves. There's only Wakefield, I think, that didn't have any in place, and they're recently, I think, going to appoint two more. So it would be difficult to do that. And development management officers, quite like having a local person to talk to on a regular basis, and I'm sure as members you do as well. So I don't think it would work for the planning scrutiny role. Whether it would work for being a habitat bank and maybe selling biodiversity units, that's something we'll have to keep an eye on. And maybe over time, that is on the back burner really, we'll keep on investigating that over time.
Just also to add in as well, we've been looking for these opportunities to add value, councillor Anderson. So for example, some of our staff in planning have been providing mapping for the other West Yorkshire authorities. And we're looking to maybe do that at cost as we move forward. There's also going to be an issue around calculating river units, because that requires a bit of an even more of a speciality in terms of ecologists. So we're having the debate amongst the West Yorkshire authorities about whether we could have one of them specialising in river biodiversity units.
And to continue then, on to your third question, that was about the costs that we may be liable to, the burdens for us to implement BNG. Can we pass any of those costs on to the developer, I think is what you were asking. It's very difficult to do that. The one thing we can do is, and what we are proposing to do, is set ourselves up as the BNG monitoring and reporting body. That's often how I'm referring to myself now as the nature team within the planning function. If we are providing that BNG monitoring and reporting body role, i.e. we as the council saying we really care about what units have been delivered on site and what's been delivered off-site, regardless of who it's by, we do have to try and think if we can make a charge for that. And that's what we are proposing in the way we're implementing this. So we're saying wherever there's off-site BNG units being delivered, we will put a charge in place through a section 106 to partly cover that BNG monitoring and reporting body role. So we'll do that if the private habitat banks or developers are doing it on their own land, we can use the section 106 as a model there. Where we're actually selling units ourselves as the council, we're also factoring into that cost to try and cover that BNG monitoring and reporting body role. So we are trying to do that, and there are always. So thank you for that one. The fourth question was about the role of WAICA, the West Yorkshire Combined Authority. I think sometimes we get BNG and local nature recovery strategies a little bit mixed up. They are really separate, but there are areas of overlap. BNG is a planning related function, that is purely down to us as the LPA. The LNRS is what WAICA are going to be leading on as a responsible authority, that's not a planning role. But there is an overlap in that eventually the LNRS will identify a spatial map showing where the most important habitats are, and where the opportunity areas are. And that's when we have to think through our LPU, well not LPU one, but the next update of the local plan, we'll be thinking if the LNRS has got a spatial map showing these areas, we should try and accommodate it within the local plan. But meanwhile, we're also doing an awful lot of work on that. We've got a Leeds Habitat Network through the LPU one, and we've got a designated site. So in reality, we'll probably be influencing the LNRS. So we should be ahead of the game is what I'm saying there. The last question was about risks and financial monitoring, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'll let Martin. So just to come in on that one councillor, that's a bit of a live issue at the moment. So we intend to go to Executive Board in September with a more detailed version of this report, that will be accompanied by an understanding of how we expect the governance around this to work. And that will, that will look at what groups and bodies might need to be set up within the council in order to scrutinise that role, have scrutiny over it, but also report back in terms of how the money's being spent.
You've indicated you're happy to move on, so there are no further questions, that's fine. Councillor Carlin, yes?
Thank you Chair. A few questions really, some of them I think you alluded to a little bit in the presentation on the answers, but I just want to get it 100% clear in my mind. So I guess I've got a few questions I'll go through. So first, just a bit of reassurance, I guess, on how we ensure biodiversity and not monoculture out of what we're creating. So that what is delivered is actually a diversity of habitats rather than a selection of similar habitats all the way through. And I guess in tandem with that, how does this policy look to replace what is lost, both historically possibly, as well as what may be lost from an individual development on a site? Because there may be lots of different types of habitats that are at risk and have been lost over decades and hundreds of years, that no longer are on existing sites, I guess, that developers might take over. And I guess the loss of biodiversity across the district will be certainly different amounts over history. So areas of the city centre, you would imagine, have lost a great deal of the biodiversity in that area before it was developed at all. Whereas there will be areas where a large number of the habitat still exist. So how do we use the policy, I guess, to try and focus on those areas where there is a lack of biodiversity at the moment? That's all around that, that point really, just in terms of how the policy aims at that. But one other thought occurs to me, obviously there are these different types of habitat that could be created. You mentioned Martin, the rivers habitat, for instance. I'm assuming there'll be a different cost per unit of those to a developer. And how do we ensure what is replaced is replaced at the appropriate cost for the appropriate amount of what is lost, rather than the cheapest habitat possible to replace with? Sorry, I'm coming on to the end now. Obviously, it's easier to replace that biodiversity on council land, but as we found through the woodland creation project and others, we don't have a huge amount of council land available to us where a large, where areas of woodland, for instance, might need to be created on large pieces of land. And we're finding that limited in some ways. Can the, if we receive a payment for biodiversity net gain off-site, could that be used to purchase land to enhance its biodiversity, which could help make up some of that shortfall in areas with lack of biodiversity, and then improve on it over time? Or would it only cost, would it only be able to be used for improving that site rather than the original purchase of a site, I guess? And the last question is just around how this would be consulted with local residents. So how do local residents get a chance to say, you know, I remember 30 years ago when this was like this, how do we get back some of that? And how do residents say what they would like to see returned in their areas? Oh, I did have one last one, sorry, coming back. I guess it's around the area with the greatest loss. I'm a bit concerned that the matchmaking ability may prejudice areas going on places with existing nature reserves rather than those without them. So it might be easier to spend money on Rodley Nature Reserve in my ward, which exists and is there, than to be able to create biodiversity in Little London and Woodhouse, which as far as I remember doesn't have a nature reserve. And I'm sure there will be many others, Bermond Toffson, Richmond Hill, or other wards that are heavily built up. I guess that's similar to the other lines, but a series of questions there. Apologies for the time, hopefully they make sense.
I'll just come in and make a strategic point there councillor Carlin, because I think they're all really relevant questions and ones that we've been, we've been mulling over as well. I think what's going to be important is that we are, as a council, geared up from November of this year to be able to engage in the biodiversity broker market. Because thus far, the Environment Act has been in a transition phase. So it becomes mandatory from November, and at that point, all development and all developers will have to engage in it. So I think it's important that the council has an opportunity to engage in that, sell units and improve sites. Now, what will then need to happen is there'll need to be a council strategy to guide how we do that, and how that's done not just this year for the next year or two years, but over the next 30 years. Because the council will, through engagement in biodiversity net gain, start to acquire a habitat bank of sites where it is responsible for managing them for the next 30 years. And that will increasingly grow as more and more developers engage with the council through BNG. Now, despite the fact despite the fact that BNG is being driven through the section 106 process, it doesn't fall to the same rules as section 106 development in terms of planning conditions on section 106 development, in terms of it being proximate to the development. Because if if we were to to collect green space, for example, at the moment, we'd look to 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 put that green space somewhere, look within the local board. BNG wouldn't be subject to those, to those same rules. But despite that, the local plan update does have a policy and and I think it's set out within the report here as to how we approach that. And it's going to be, I think, a number of different things happening in tandem. And I think, subject to council endorsement of what that biodiversity strategy might look like, it could be around bringing nature closer to people, especially within urban environments. Because obviously, we we don't get away from the fact that we are a metropolitan authority. Um. And and it's important for everyone to have access to nature. Um. And it's important for nature to thrive and it'll do that in different ways in an urban environment than it would if you were delivering biodiversity net net gain units in a in a rural environment. So I think that strategy and how we think about that um is going to operate at a number of levels. We may have some key biodiversity priorities where we're looking at really improving degraded nature reserves within the city, for example, to 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 get real bang for our buck in terms of improvement of biodiversity. And then that might be coupled with a sort of a bringing nature closer to local people. And that's when we bring in some of the wider planning policies around green infrastructure, green space, how we manage our parks, to try to get those ecological connections and those ecological routes. So there's going to be, I think, a need to think quite holistically about how we run BNG through through the city. But at the moment, I don't think we've got all the answers to those questions. Um. I think we're just gearing up and getting ready um for 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 the mandatory BNG coming in. But happy to hand over to Richard on the the others.
Yeah, thanks, Martin. Hopefully that covered a a number of your points. Um. I think some of your questions, we probably don't have all the answers to yet, and I don't think BNG will have for a little while. Um. Regarding trying to use money to buy land, that that's an interesting one. I wish it did. Um. Well, um, I think the best we can do is try and set our priorities like Martin was saying there, where we think offsite BNG should go. And I think it's paragraph twenty-two, isn't it, that really highlights the bit of the sorry, yeah. Sorry, I think the camera was on me or my mic then, but hopefully you you heard me. Uh. I think the point I was saying was, um, we can't technically buy land with BNG money. It doesn't, the national system doesn't allow that. What you'd have to do is proactively buy land at your own cost and then use it for delivering BNG. So we have difficulties as as a council being able to do that, don't we, with cash flows? So that's just a fact of life, I think, with it. I mean, private habitat banks may be able to do that. We're going to have to think creatively whether we can start to do that. But it needs wider discussions, I think, across the council. For now, though, what we're saying in paragraph twenty-two is where if it's got to go offsite, we're trying to identify where are the priority areas. Um. And what we're trying to say is, is yes, it is where there is the most important biodiversity. That's got to be part of it. It is biodiversity in that game. So we're looking at designated sites. We're looking at the Leeds Habitat Network, which covers the whole of Leeds anyway. Um. We've got a category in there about it can be anywhere else outside of the Leeds Habitat Network. But we're saying there should be a level of public access if that's the case. And we're trying to recognise the wider societal benefits of having access to nature with that one. What we don't do is go as far as saying um we know where there's deficit areas for natural green space in these. We haven't done that level of research yet. That might be something we have to look into in the future. Um. It'd be great to have that piece of work and maybe it's something over the next few years, we can work with Leeds University or others to work out. Because there is something called the access to natural green space standards. So we could try and apply those. Then we could work out where are, which areas have got good access for natural green space and which areas have got the least. And then we could bind that into a strategy to try and deliver BNG in those areas. So, yeah, it's a good thought. Um. But yeah, we'll have to see how we can do that. Um. The, was there anything else in your questions? I'm just thinking, I'm just looking down what I've written here. Um. There was one question, sorry, about consultation as well, I think, with local communities, and that's a really important one. At the moment, we've been working with, um, used to be called Parks and Countryside, now we're calling them Climate Energy and Green Spaces. So there's an officer there who is the point of contact for developers. And they're about to recruit, well, they're about to appoint, well, they've appointed, but they're about to recruit the person who's going to be the main contact going forwards. Now, when a location is agreed that the developer can deliver them on, there will be a level of consultation now and that'll be down to the Green Spaces Service to talk to yourselves and the local community. So um that is something very much that they are thinking about and how to do that. Did my colleague want to come?
So yes, I think Victoria wanted to come in at this point, so I'd give you your opportunity.
Thank you, Chair. Um. Ju- just on the point of local consultation, also through whilst the planning application is actually being considered, all the biodiversity proposals, the the baseline measurements for that particular site will be in and will be publicly available. So people will be able to scrutinise it at that point. Now, what will generally happen is that um come November, all the relevant development will have a standard condition placed on it automatically. Even if we forget to put it on the actual decision notice, it will still apply. And that is what for the submission of a plan that will show how the developers intend to put that ten percent biodiversity net gain in, whether that's onsite or offsite. Um. Now, you asked the question about how ensure biodiversity and not a monoculture. Um. Well, what what will need to be done is when they submit the application in the first place with the baseline information for the current state of play on the site, Richard and his current team of one will be busy scrutinising that to make sure that it does check out. Um. And then what happens is that they will then have to prove that there is a ten percent uplift. Now, they can only do that by providing additional biodiversity, different habitats, different um sort of niches for for different species. Um. So if it is a monoculture, it just won't provide that uplift at all. So so we will be able to sort of ensure that, but it will require a lot of monitoring, um and that goes on for thirty years. Um. So so it's not an easy task for 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 Richard there. I see. Um. What will also happen as well, obviously, you've got that sort of local consultation going on through that process. And also through the condition stage as well, you know, people will have an opportunity to sort of input at that point as well if they if they do wish to. Um. You asked a question about whether um historical biodiversity could be recreated. Um. Now, this this isn't something I think we can can technically insist on. Um. But it's certainly something that sort of could be discussed through the negotiations that are bound to take place with developers. Um. So when we are sort of trying to sort of um negotiate on on which particular type of habitat goes in, which particular type of part of the site that they're looking at, we might be able to sort of look at what might have been there historically, what has been lost um for various reasons and try to re-implement that. Obviously, it's got to be sort of appropriate to the local area i- in order for it to be successful. So there will be elements of sort of very historical type of things going through. Obviously, with one eye on climate change, we may be looking at slightly different variations as well, though. Um. But but it's not something we can necessarily insist on. There is going to be a thing, though, um that will come in, and that's if 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 there is a a sudden clearance of a site before the application is put in and we have clear evidence that that has taken place, we are then able to insist that they go back to the previous state of the land and use that as their baseline. So that gives us quite a good assurance that we are getting ten percent on the proper habitat that was there originally.
You want to come back, Peter? Yes.
Um. Thank you. That's really useful because I I think on what I'm hea- what I'm hearing for the majority of those questions, um around Martin's answer first, I guess, is that for all apart from the the purchase of land, there's a strategy that we are able to put in place that the national um guidance around this would support us to have quite a uh uh to have choice in in what is delivered and where it is delivered around the city. Um. I I guess my one concern around that with the council acting as a broker for that, which I I think we should do, and I think is the best space for us to be. Uh. I think we already find in the woodland creation project and various others that there is this difficulty with the amount of council land we have and how much of that is used for nature, how much for sport, how much for leisure, et cetera. So, you know, it it areas with high level of development, we may find their parks are um required to deliver a large amount of biodiversity net gain if we can't buy additional land. Whereas they may be most valuable at the moment for sports and for other activities that happen on them that 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 might preclude. So it's just looking around that that I think I have a real concern. But thank you. Yeah, that's useful.
I can see you want to come in, Martin, but I just, may I add to that question? Because I may have the wrong idea about this entirely, but my understanding of creating biodiversity uh is that it doesn't necessarily result in an attractive green space. So when you are thinking about green space on a development, you tend to think about pleasant green areas for people to enjoy and seating and planting and things that look nice. Um. But I've been advised on other occasions that when you're creating biodiversity, you actually might end up with something that doesn't look too good. So that kind of changes my view about offsite or onsite and also mentioning using existing green spaces, which perhaps are parks or greenspace. And turning them into what might look like something much less attractive is something we really do need to think about.
Um. Well, councillor Gruen, I think what you're saying there, I understand. As an ecologist, I suppose you'd expect no less answer than me, other than saying things like scrub, don't they look lovely? Um. But I totally understand what you're saying. I think what we've got to do here is raise awareness about why these things look different to what traditionally we like to look at, like pristine mown green areas or flower beds. We we have beauties in the eye of the beholder. But I think to bring most of the population along with what we're trying to do, I think raising awareness is a big thing and maybe interpretation is a part of that. So I think within our Green Spaces Service, if they're going to be changing a community park that's normally quite formally managed, you've got to do in a really well considered way, which is what they would do for, you know, for example, it might be a case of, do you pick one area of a formal park and have interpretation in that area to call this bit the nature reserve within the wider park? That might be a way of creating a nature reserve within a park, but make sure you're using interpretive methods, whether it's panels or online media, to explain why that's important. Because at the end of the day, we are facing a biodiversity emergency, aren't we? So we've got to acknowledge things will probably look different. And we've got to accept it, but let's raise awareness about those things as well. Um. Sorry, what was the other part of the question?
I think, oh, well, uh, that's fine and re- really useful in that, that it's just that one distinction that creating scrub is absolutely fantastic for what we're doing. But if we're limited to just our own land, you can't play a game of football on some scrub. And and it's just making sure that we don't lose one very important feature of the community that we're trying to improve, i.e. areas for sport and 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 active green space. And and have to be forced, I guess, in certain areas to use that for also the area we're trying to create biodiversity, because the two might not align very well anyway.
Thank you. Martin, would you like to come back?
Yeah, thank you. Ju- ju- just just to reiterate, councillor Carlisle, absolutely right in what you're saying, which and and which is why I think when when we're looking through the local plan update, our green and blue infrastructure policies, we're really looking at how green space and biodiversity and accessible routes and active travel or 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 and health and wellbeing all come together within the same sort of narrative. So it's 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 about thinking how we plan for 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 natural environments across Leeds really. And just to come back to your point about how we might run out of council land, we have got quite a lot already sort of mapped that we 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 look after in terms of um nature conservation areas as part of Leeds Habitat Network, which does require significant investment. But we can also work with partners. So if 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 there's a parcel of land that would be much better to improve, um then we can think about how we do that through engaging with 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 council partners such as Yorkshire Water, the Rivers Trust, Yorkshire Wildlife Trust, um who may be managing different parcels of land within the city.
Any more to be said on that one, Peter? Or can I move on? Okay, councillor Brooks, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um. I'm a bit concerned about what I've heard, to be honest, because I am not clear as to whether it is that we can make new green spaces, whether the whether the, I mean, obviously, if you're making new green spaces, especially in the inner area, then there should be an element of biodiversity within that. I'm not saying all of it should be scrub, but a part of it should um go towards increasing, you know, that that net gain in the inner area. Um. Yeah, I'm really baffled as to as to what is it we're doing with it? Um. Like, is it, is it possible, for example, to to I don't know, like, without the option of council selling on on paragraph twenty, um it's important to realise this could result in BNG being delivered in locations completely unconnected to the impact site, including outside Leeds. And yet officers are saying that there's going to be input from local people. And I'll tell you now, people in the in the inner area are not going to be up for that at all. So we we as a priority, we really, really need to be identifying sites, both for existing developments that are coming forward to make sure that there's enough green spaces and a bio biodiversity impact from those green spaces. Um. And any future developments? Um. When when we were on city plans last week, um it came up, as you know, Chair. Um. Where where are all these people who are going to be in these blocks? Where are they going to go to have a picnic and be with nature, you know? Like, um, I'm I'm incredibly concerned. Um. It also doesn't sound like this model is very useful or yeah, useful to to make it so that that local people can um have have input when there's a marketisation process. Um. Like, surely, surely if there's a marketisation process, then it's just going to the highest slash lowest bidder, rather than talking to local people to ask what it is that, you know, they want, what improvements they can see. Really, really concerned. Um. Can can officers please give me some reassurance and tell me what it is that I need to do and who I need to write to?
Martin, did you want to start off with this?
Yeah, I'll 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 start and I'll I'll just just by saying that whilst I think it's going to be important that we reflect the multiple purposes that our green spaces in Leeds can serve, largely recreation, sometimes nature conservation. This is not about green space. This BNG is not about delivering green space for recreation. The council has separate policies on green space that will apply to development. An offsite green space or onsite green space will still happen. At sometimes, that on or offsite green space may happen and coincide with biodiversity improvement. And it might be within our best interest to lay out and design a green space which also has biodiverse biodiverse benefits. But not always. So it it, this will not be at the expense of space for recreation. Um. And green space, as you know it, with it within the city. It it's it's a separate process to that. But this is the government's chosen model of delivering biodiversity recovery and improvement. It is the government's metric, the government system. And the government has set it up so that it can operate entirely through the private market. The city council need not get involved in BNG and not sell units at all. If it were to choose to do that, it would lose out on on investment and income streams that would enable it to improve nature on selective parcels of land. Um. So I think what's going to be really important to to deal with the concerns you have, councillor Brooks, is that we're really clear about what our green spaces uh strategy is and what our nature conservation strategy is. And there will be obviously bits of that that overlap. But I think clarity in terms of what we're trying to achieve through both of those is going to be important as we as we move through this process. I don't know whether Richard's.
Richard, anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, just to give you a little bit more reassurance, councillor Brooks, I I think the process that uh Richard, Martin and Victoria have described, we are trying to intervene in a system which is sort of leaving this issue to the leaving this issue to the market. We're trying to put in place a methodology and a model which puts the council in the driving seat to enable us to be able to make the best use of council assets in terms of open space, green space, nature areas, however you you would like to describe them, in a way that makes them sort of fit for purpose for this agenda. And our ability to influence developers at an early stage, we'll say a pre-application process, would enable us to to arrive at a position where we've got this matching process to enable us to try and deliver optimum net gain in locations that we feel are appropriate and have the public involvement that we've been outlining. So it is a given that we've been given in terms of the the act and what it sets out. But I think the initiative we take and we're trying to be innovative and on the front foot for the council in terms of being able to get the best outcomes for our city and and nature, and also for that to feed into the wider issues around the climate emergency as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear, David, it's it's a green space, our existing green space and any further green space we may choose to add or developers may choose to add, plus BNG. Is that correct? So this is a whole new raft of BNG, albeit green or whatever. Yeah. And just momentarily returning to my theme of how things look, the nature reserve that that councillor Carlisle referred to actually looks beautiful and it's a lovely walk around, but it's a different sort of beauty. And I think that's what we need to kind of communicate. I have to say that I I have difficulty living with our relaxed moan reservations in the middle of the road, because I don't think they look attractive. But I suppose if you if you threw a few wildflower seeds in them, it might take on a different perspective. And I think there's room for parks and planning to work together and coming up with strategies to make things look better. Councillor Brooks?
Thank you. Yeah. Is it possible then, because BNG is completely separate? But is it? Is it still possible to put together something that squashes BNG in with that section 106 side of things, while the the green spaces contribution side of things? Oh, and also, I've written down so much that I missed it earlier, sorry. In terms of the inner area, especially in more built up areas, if if BNG can't be delivered near to the site, would it be possible to retrofit green walls and green roofs onto existing buildings? Or is that completely outside of this? Is this a sort of market decides type of thing? Or is this? Yeah.
Yes, thank you for those questions again. Yeah. Regarding the section 106 issue, because this is a whole new area biodiversity net gain, it's separate to green space contributions in section 106. It's something that is legally required after November. So the section 106 is if anything's being delivered offsite, we'll be stating how many biodiversity units, what type of biodiversity units they are and where they're being delivered. And that'll be in a section 106. There's differences whether it's applied, well, delivered by a private habitat bank or if it's delivered by the council. But it will always be the same principle. It's numbers of units. It's a separate, completely separate to green space, but it will be a section 106 contribution where we're selling biodiversity units as a council. We'd also be developing supplementary planning guidance at some point. So the policy that you will have seen to do with BNG, policy G nine, has got quite a detailed supporting text as well, because this is a new area of work. So we thought it really important to make it really clear to developers what our expectations are. But we still understand that we'll need supplementary planning guidance that can go into more detail. And we'll be working on that over the next six months as well to add more detail to to the BNG. A colleague wanted to come back on that.
Just to just to add to the point that's been made by Richard about them being two completely separate legal obligations. When it relates to credits that we're delivering or the developer is, it's also an obligation to make sure that that thirty year period is completely contractually and legally bound as well. So we, in terms of our monitoring duty, will make sure that that's contractually delivered for that entire period within the 106.
And just coming back to the last question I think you had, it was about green walls and retrofitting. Retrofitting is difficult through BNG. I mean, what we need to know before determination is exactly what biodiversity units are being delivered onsite and what's being delivered offsite. The biodiversity metric, though, does include green walls, green roofs. Yeah, I think it even differentiates between green roofs and extensive and intensive types of green roofs to understand the differences for biodiversity. So those things are in the biodiversity metric, but it needs to be known before determination. Now, yeah, that's all I'll say on that one.
When we move on, councillor Brooks, or would you like to come back? Okay, councillor Biffle.
Thanks very much. I've also got a few, if that's okay. I think for me, the beauty conversation or the beauty comments, it's about beauty versus utility. And anything is beautiful as long as it's serving a purpose. So actually, being able to make it really clear to the public what the utility of these areas are and what you can use them for feels really important. A scrub land, for example, is excellent for geocaching. So actually, there are some really effective uses of these beautiful habitats if we're able to support the public to understand their utility over and above, obviously, the climate change purposes. I wanted to come back on one of councillor Carlisle and also what councillor Brooks has kind of touched on as well, in terms of the we've talked about the fact that the biodiversity units that are taken are what can then be replaced with BNG. And I think when we're talking about historical loss, I don't think we're necessarily talking about on the on the site. So for me, in my ward, in an inner city ward, the historical loss was a hundred years ago. And actually, if we're saying, right, something's being built in this lovely outer rural field with lots of trees, so therefore only trees in a nice field can be replaced. Well, that's of no purpose to my ward, because there's about three inches to put a tree on. Whereas actually, if we can think out of the box and do like for like habitat units, then we would be able to fit different, smaller things in that could provide that increased benefit in inner city wards as well. In terms of this being a bit of a capitalist dream, are we looking to sell these units outside of our local authority? No, shaking heads. Doom. Thought that might be a little income stream. Also, who decides the number for a unit? Do we have a dream number for each area of the city? And distribution of which types of habitats we want to see in each number, like, have we mapped that? And then finally, this is great in that moment, but how are we looking to then support the succession of the micro ecosystems? Because councillor Grun was absolutely right. You could throw some flower seeds at it, but also there's no succession there. It'll die very immediately. So how are we supporting that succession? And are we, when we're picking where these units go, are we really thinking about what what things, what changes are coming up that could impact future success and on that biodiversity that could stop it from reaching full capacity, for want of a better word, of what that biodiverse unit could give? Thanks.
That sounds like one for you, Richard.
I think we're starting to enter into the philosophical side of biodiversity net gain. Which is a shame, we probably can't dig into too much. I mean, it's the biodiversity metric is set up in a particular way. That's beyond air control. The way it works is if you're losing, like Martin said earlier, certain types of habitat units on site, more recently than what you're describing, there'll be a requirement to replace those types of habitat units onsite or offsite or a combination of the two. It's not quite as simple as if you lose grassland, you've got to replace grassland. What the metric gives you is an incentive for a higher distinctiveness habitat. So you could lose a type of grassland, provided you're replacing it with a higher distinctiveness type of habitat, provided the grassland is only up to a certain level of value. Anyway, there's distinctiveness bands within the metrics. So the metric is a very complex tool. So it does dictate what type of units have to be delivered to a degree. What I would say as well is everything delivered offsite has to go on something called a national sites register. So it's, I also don't want to give the impression that you can achieve little tiny bits here, there and there, like just tiny pockets of new bits of habitat, because you've got to put this on the national sites register and monitor and report against it for a minimum thirty year period. So it is better off being in medium or large sized areas wherever possible. That's just the the way it would work. It'd get very complicated if you've got very small areas dotted around everywhere. I think that was the gist of what you were asking me, but is there anything else in particular?
Do come back if you'd like to, councillor Biffle.
Thank you. Yeah. I guess the key one that you didn't touch on was the how we're going to support succession. But I guess if we're only using bigger areas, then maybe that in itself means that monitoring will make sure that that is supported. And then I guess my only comment would be that from your replies, it sounds like actually it won't be overly useful for the inner city wards as it stands. Is that misunderstood?
I think when you're talking about scale and area of habitats, you can deliver more units on a bigger piece of land and more diversity of habitats. It can still be done on a relatively small scale. So it just depends what hectareage, what area you're talking about. But I think if you're getting down below quarter of a hectare, it starts to get a bit more difficult. So I can understand what you're saying in relation to inner city areas and it's the size of land available, isn't it really? Yeah.
David?
But I I I think it's a fair point. No, sorry, it's Martin. It's fine. Um, you've promoted me. It's okay, council. It's, I think what I'd like to see the 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 BNG system be used for is 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 not just parcels of land, but linear elements of land as well. So if we can start to improve sort of access, and that's of particular importance in the inner city, where we've got bits of green infrastructure that 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 are maybe broken up at the moment, and how we can look to sort of use some of this investment to actually plug them together, not just for the movement of plants and animals and species, which is healthy for a plant and an animal to be able to 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 move over over increased distances, but also then lends itself to to human access as well. So so I think it goes back to the sort of the first answer I gave really around, we need a strategy in 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 order to really understand how to deliver this.
Do you think we could work on an inner city strategy? I don't mean in isolation from everything that we're doing overall, but colleagues have pointed up some real difficulties about the inner city. And we really do need some explicit ways of tackling that, don't we? As creatively as we can. And my mind is thinking particularly about, there are quite a number of out of control or messy gardens on some of our estates, which might be better used for purposes like that than just being left to be overgrown in more haphazard way. Just a thought.
I I think, Chair, there'll be there'll be a number of opportunities. We might want to start with the river and the river corridor, because that offers us a really important sort of set area that 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 really has become quite degraded. So actually, in in terms of focusing investment in in the river and and on the banks of the river to to facilitate nature, but also, you know, facilitate people visiting that and being able to use. So so that will be one aspect of it. But but then I think there are opportunities, as you say, to 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 look at smaller pockets. But but I think you're right. I think we do need to, you know, a- a- as we go on, we'll have an eye to looking at how this plays out in the inner city and the priority neighbourhoods in particular. Because otherwise, I think there is a danger that it will be seen as something that's only going to benefit those areas of the city that have already got quite good access to nature in any case.
Yes. Victoria?
Yeah, I just wanted to sound a slight note of caution and and Richard, please do shout if I've got this completely wrong, but if we're talking about a brownfield site being developed, the requirement to provide BNG for that site might be nil, because ten percent of nil is nil. That does mean that the inner areas may be slightly disadvantaged, because technically sort of the sites there may not have as much on them. So I think it is therefore really important that the council does have an overarching strategy that looks at where sort of the priorities are going to be and how money is going to be sort of directed around the whole district and not just sort of retained necessarily within individual wards.
But there will be historical loss, surely, even in an inner city on a brownfield site. I'll bring you in in a moment, Peter.
But 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 the metric can only really assess what's there. It can't assess what was there twenty, thirty, forty years ago. It's 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 this is about restoring nature now.
Okay. I've got two further speakers, but councillor Carlisle, if it's on the immediate point.
Yeah, it's very short on that. Yeah. Because I think that was the point I was getting at. If if I purchased a bit of land fifteen years ago, that was a lovely area of scrub with trees, with hedgerows, with everything. And then I was able to get permission in some way to concrete over the whole thing. Were I to make an application on that land now, my understanding is exactly that, that I would have to provide next to nothing in terms of biodiversity net gain. However, if I was building on a green field with lots of hedgerows, with lots of trees on it, then I would have to provide above and beyond what is lost. So would end up providing more wildlife habitat in an area with more wildlife habitat already. So actually, you know, it it could end up really enhancing, I guess, that injustice of the green space and the wildlife habitat. Especially if we focus on building on brownfield sites where they might have to do nothing. Although some of the best bits will be scrub that has just been left there. That has a value, I assume. If you've just not maintained an area for some years and has become scrub, then that has a value. But thank you.
All the more reason to think about an inner city strategy, isn't it, really? So councillor McKenna.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I keep getting drawn to paragraph twenty and I find it totally unacceptable. BNG being delivered in locations completely unconnected to the impact site, including outside Leeds. I find that really difficult. I mean, there's no doubt about the inner city ward is there's very little green space, but we do have a canal and we do have a river and that's very helpful. But I I do think that if you if you're lucky enough to be able to afford a house in the outdoor areas or in the inner areas, you will have a garden. And that's the nearest you're going to get to a biodiversity. But if you buy an apartment in a high rise and there's no place to sit outside, just sit with the kids. And we've had this discussion several times in many places. You know, somewhere for the kids to sit down and maybe play, maybe a bit of play equipment. I think it's really difficult for a councillor who represents the inner city ward to allow that to happen. And I know the legislation, I understand that, but at the end of the day, we're there to represent our community. And my question really, apart from that, is offsite option, and it says on the matrix, monitoring obligations on council for all options. You've made it clear that there may be money available to do that. But let me give you an example, which I'm sure that's not enough. We are trying, army councillors are trying desperately to have a playground in New Wurley. It's one of the most deprived areas in the country, not just the city. And we're trying to put packages and money together from all sorts of things and we may succeed. But we got, I was going to say ultimatum, but we've got a direction from Parks and Countryside or whatever they call themselves now, TUSIA, that we have to provide ten years maintenance for that playground, forty thousand pounds, which is four thousand pounds a year. That adds very substantial costs. Now, my question is back to the matrix, when we sell them off per unit, are we considering future maintenance in that way? I mean, it wasn't clear from speakers, but if we are, we should be. And is it ten years or is it thirty years? We're talking about a nature a nature reserve. I think that's really important. If if we have to do it for the city council, the city council, particularly if it's on council land, will have the bills for maintaining that for evermore, I guess. Hopefully, green space will be ever not. But I do understand that we're in there, problems with global warming. And the other thing, a good point made by Peter regarding nature reserves, it would it would really be nice if we could get a new nature reserve. And to me, that would be the type of thing we might do on a West Yorkshire basis. And I understand the complications. But if we could do that and get a a nature park, we would require But if we could do that and get a a nature park, uh, we would require stuff like a ranger, warden, people to maintain it. Is that all included in it? Because if there isn't, there really ought to be. And I'll leave it there, Chair.
Very good question. Uh, who would like to take it? Richard?
Yeah, good questions. Definitely, Council, Councilor McKenna. The first one, I think it was more of a statement with paragraph twenty. You you were saying that you wouldn't want a system that relied purely on the private market, which would result in it being delivered outside of the district, even somewhere else in the country. Yeah. And that's not what we're proposing here. The the main point of the policy for B N G and uh, you know, this paper is about saying we are wanting to enter the market and sell biodiversity units. We've been do doing it already in a trial test case running up to November. Uh, and we're saying we want to carry on doing it after November. I think everyone here has said it's really important that we do. Because by bringing in the council's own land, we can try and make it more local to the impact. Might not always be perfect, but it'd be a lot more local than not offering it at all. That's the key point, I think, there. Um, the second point was about monitoring obligations, I think you mentioned, and and yes, it would be we'd be looking to monitor all the units delivered onsite and offsite, regardless of who's delivering them. You know, as part of my role, we'd want to be doing that. Um, whether it's a private market or another part of the council, like our green spaces service. You know, I'll be just as vigilant about what our own council, part of the service is delivering units as well. Do the private habitat banks. I think that's an important point. The last one was regarding new nature reserves um and the thirty year kind of period. Or I think the thirty year period was a previous question, wasn't it? I think you were saying you're hoping that the cost we're charging is for the full thirty year periods. Yeah.
Maintenance, future maintenance after uh, we've set it up and laid it out with whether it's manicured lawns or it's scrubland.
Yep, so. It will, it will, yeah. Thank you. So the the onsite delivery of biodiversity units will be for thirty years, done through planning condition. Um, but where we're selling biodiversity units to be delivered on the council land, certainly we'll be looking at the full thirty years and it's all of that maintenance period. It's not just like the initial habitat creation, is it? Or the establishment phase, it's got to be after that. And the legislation is stating a minimum thirty year period. So we be using that period of time and that's what the biodiversity unit cost is based upon. Um, over time, I'm sure we'll need to review that cost and see whether it needs to be changed, but that's going to be the starting point anyway that we're we're setting off with. The last point was about nature reserves and new nature reserves. It's it's an issue very close to my heart. I mean, you you look in Leeds and how many nature reserves do we have and where are they? I think that's what a lot of today's conversation is really about and be interesting to see a map, wouldn't it, showing this is where all the nature reserves are, not just owned by the council. We're owned by parish councils, town councils, Rodley Nature Reserve, R S P B, Wildlife Trust, et cetera.
And Arby Common Rights Trust.
Absolutely. There's all kinds out there. East Keswick Wildlife Trust, we could go on. There's all number of organisations there that have got nature reserves, that have got elements of public access. Um, I think that's what we're going to be looking towards a local nature recovery strategy to help us with, and that's part of our role to make sure the biodiversity priorities do include not just investing in existing nature reserves, making them bigger as well as creating completely new ones and creating new ones of all different sizes. Look at St Aidan's, that's nearly four hundred hectares of wonderful wetland of national level importance because of the birds that are there. And the public enjoy it, don't they? They've they've got their own Facebook page to do with St Aidan's. But that's a massive thing, isn't it? Four hundred hectares. We can't achieve that everywhere. When the inner city centre areas, maybe we should be aiming for one or two hectares nature reserves. So it's part of our overall priorities, I think Martin's alluded to, we've got to think about and how we set those. Uh, just as an aside, many years ago, um um, somebody called John Box set up the the, I think it was the area of local nature reserve per thousand population. So he basically said every part of the country should have one hectare of local nature reserve per thousand population. You look at the population of Leeds, it's seven hundred and eighty thousand roughly. And we've got about seven hundred and eighty hectares of local nature reserve. Yet we know we've still got problems, don't we? So although we're meeting that national target, we maybe need to be more ambitious than that and also look at areas where we haven't got local nature reserves that that should have them. I'm so, all I'm saying is biodiversity net gain can't solve all the problems, but it's the start of a conversation, I think, moving forwards. Thank you.
Councilor Actar. Oh, sorry, you wanted to come back.
Yeah, I I think it'd be uh helpful if we rewrote paragraph twenty and take that out. It offends my eye. I think anybody else who would read that would feel the same way. I'm sure we could find a a different way of saying that. And I'm glad you mentioned St Aidan's. I used to be chair of the management committee there many, many years ago when I was chair of planning in the mid nineties. And in fact, I authorised a dragline to be purchased from uh uh, from America, you know, and I spent a lot of time there when the river was breached and it flooded and it became the deepest lake, lake in England. But it's a, it's an area that's very close to my heart, but uh, and like unfortunately, it's not accessible to people who live in Arby.
Okay, thanks for that, Jim. Um, I'll take Councilor Actar next, if I may.
Chair, so much has been said uh since I raised my uh my hand and 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 all wild points. Um, especially what Council Brooks and Council McKenna just mentioned about the section twenty of the of the report. Uh, I can think back when there was an issue in in our neck of the wood, uh, about four, five years ago. Mature trees, piece of land, uh, very little spaces that we have, and that land was going to develop a seventeen storey high building. And that that is worrying for local residents and also for local councillors. And and talking about the nature reserve, we've got one in our part of the uh city, which which is well kept, well maintained by by the volunteers. Uh, it's on uh, it's on on long term lease. And and these of uh woodlands having right in this middle of the city centre, so I think that's something that needs to be protected. And and this is where the concern is. Also, it's been mentioned by the Valley Road. I mean, I remember when I was a councillor back in day. Uh, and I I remember going on onto those sites and how attractive it was for local residents. And at that time, the the council was trying to push it for the housing, uh, and it was obviously, uh, it was campaigned to 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 stop. Uh, but obviously people do have a passion about the open spaces and and some of the woodlands that we are all proud of, you know, going in any direction from centre within three miles, two miles, we see so many um nat- naturally protected lands, which obviously, which we are proud of. Anything that we can do. And and I agree with Council McKenna, if you can revisit the uh it the twenty, section twenty of the report, that's something I'll I'll feel more comfortable.
Thank you. Would any officers like to comment on that contribution? I think it was a very clearly expressed view. Uh, Javid, I I would add that as well as taking out the wording of para twenty or changing it, that you might want to add in some more words of explanation around some of the points that have come up this afternoon. Just so that you you sort of learn through these discussions what people understand. Council Hayden, did I see you indicate? Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. Um, just on I think question, uh, paragraph twenty, I don't think we should take it out. It's the truth. I mean, that's what the government has set up, that if we didn't get involved, this could be entirely run by the private market and any of this net game might not be in Leeds at all. That is, that is the truth. I think maybe it needs to be a bit explicit about what we're dealing with here. Because I don't want, yes, it's offensive, but that's the truth. That's what we're dealing with and we so we we as proactive council and the proactive administration want to get involved so that we mitigate the very worst that could happen in terms of bio net biodiversity net gain in this city and lose out on our very residents that need it the most and need that nature around them, not having any at all because it's down in, I don't know, Tunbridge Wells or something. So, um, it's um, it's really, um but maybe it needs that greater explanation that this is not our model. We are trying to work with a model that has been given to us and get the best out of it that we can get for Leeds. Um, I'm very, um yeah, we need corridors. Martin's absolutely right. There is no point, well, there's very little point unless you're only wanting flying things to have pockets of um, land given over to biode- biodiversity. Because animals will get killed on roads and, you know, um, I often look at the roundabout near Sainsbury's near the motorway, near where I am in Colton. And it's um in Holton, sorry, and it near Colton. And I think, well, if any rabbit wanted to come off that island, it'd be squished within seconds. So we need corridors and that's what the um, the the in the outer ring road gives us. And yeah, but we have to change our idea of beauty. The Victorians have got a lot to answer for. They gave us great parks, but they clipped them within an inch of their lives. And they they decided that those nice rose bushes and that those manicured lawns were what were beautiful in terms of nature. It's not, it wasn't before the Victorian period and it and it's certainly not good for biodiversity. Nettles are fantastic because certain species of butterflies only um lay their eggs and their their caterpillars develop on the underside of nettle of nettle leaves. We might not like the look of nettles, they might sting us, but they are very, very good for biodiversity. So I love our outer ring road. They are corridors of, it's a corridor of complete and we're letting nature dictate. We're not saying it should be that flower there, it should be those, you know, it should be that tree. We're letting nature dictate what the what the soil um will withstand, what the the light will will want and what actually nature needs. And I'm really, you know, when an owl on the outer ring road nearly in 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 Colton again, nearly flew into our car. And I'm glad my sister was with me because I could have been making it up and hallucinating. That's the first time I've ever seen an owl in East Leeds and I hear them quite often now. And that is down to the the relaxed mowing on the on the outer ring road. So we might not like the look of it, but it is biodiversity net gain. And I I do apologize to my colleagues like along here because I live in a ward with incredibly deprived neighbourhood. Um, but in running through the middle of it, it's got um, a nature reserve and it's walking distance to one of our great city parks. So we're incredibly lucky in Temple Newsom. And the nature reserve that goes along the white back and using that blue infrastructure, I think is really, really important, especially in the city centre. We need to focus on that blue infrastructure and and getting the biodiversity net gain along that, both in and out of the water. Sorry, I banged on too much.
Thank you for that. Uh, would any officer like to comment or qualify? Martin, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I'm 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 happy to. Thank you. Thanks for that, Council Hayden. Yeah, I I I think we just need to rewrite para twenty to make it a bit more explicit in terms of what what we're seeking here. Um, so it was just to say really that I'm I'm really pleased that we brought this paper here today. Um, because we've got some really good initial feedback um, that we can then use to 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 improve the paper as as it goes through to exec board. So when it comes back to D P P in September, um, hopefully we'll see more in there about the inner city, about the intent of how we're going to use um B N G. What what I will say is, this is the start of a journey. And we're we're getting ourselves geared up to be able to engage in the B N G market. We won't have all the answers in September. And I think there's a wider council conversation um that we'll need to be very closely engaged in around that strategy and around what that looks like. Uh, and I think the spend of B N G monies is going to help stimulate that 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 conversation. Um, and and I can try and reflect that um within the report that that goes to executive um board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I've got two more speakers and then I think it's time we we summarised. So, Council Anderson, you wanted to come back.
Just, I was gonna come back in again on paragraph twenty and also uh, paragraph five on page twenty-three as well. Because I recently had a conversation about a year ago with a major developer who was wanting to build my area and I asked them about work that they could do to improve the biodiversity. Their answer was, well, we're one of the major builders. We're doing a lot of work down in the south of England and that's where we're putting our biodiversity, rightly or wrongly. So what what's my solution to that? Is, do we, can we condition that Leeds gets the first chance to supply the uh biodiversity needs. So in other words, the first port of call is have we got a piece of land that we are using? Can we condition it that we get the first choice? Or any land that we've bought some credits for, can we condition that? So that we don't end up with the developer claiming that down in Tunbridge Wells, to quote Council Hayden, uh, gets the yeah, but the but the part, the principle that she's making is correct, that down in the south of the country might be where it goes. It's the principle, not the nitpicking over the So is there anything we can do or are or is this again something that we're we've been gifted by the government and we've got to make the best we can? Or do we have the flexibility when you come back in September to say first port of call is Leeds? Second port of call is uh, I ask if we've we've bought any credits. Because it worries me and it's fine in my word. Yes, if something's built, we will get something. I mean, let's be honest with that. But I would argue that a lot of my residents would argue that even a ten percent uplift isn't enough to make good for what they perceive to be the loss. Because trying to explain to some residents and Council Hayden just explained about the grass, that there is a perception, it's untidy, it's not what they want. And it's how, and our role is to get that message over and it's how we do that. So that's a bit longer than I anticipated, but it just.
Richard?
Yeah, I mean, the main point of the policy for B N G, it's a brand new policy. Um, it specifies in there if off-site B N G is going to be delivered, we we state four areas it should be delivered. We don't include the south of England. We include, you know, as per paragraph twenty-two, there's four points in there that policy-wise off-site will have to comply with. And that's all within the district. Um, we will be considering whether water course biodiversity units get delivered slightly more widely. Because um they're more strategic through the Environment Agency, water catchments do, don't stop at political boundaries. But from a habitat biodiversity point of view, we do state in that policy those four points. So that is within the same district and it also says locally as much as possible. So I think we should be okay on that point. That's pretty much part of why we wrote the policy. Um, the other thing is
Chair, just just for clarity, so so that's the local plan update draft policy. So that that that's not adopted policy yet. That that that's what we intend to to adopt.
Can I, can I just come in as well? Just during that interim period, there might be a period of some fluid um application in relation to that. In applying a condition, you know what the legal test is, that still applies. So as long as the policy is in place, we can legitimately apply that condition. There's a bit of a gap in between that period. We may have some difficulty there. But what I expect on on this, the conditionality, is a lot of appeals going through and case law arising from it, because this has been government-led. Um, and the legislation is framed in a particular way. So I can see local authorities quite rightly challenging this. I'm not advocating this by any means, but it it will give us a pathway of what's happening across the country and we can refine our position and apply those conditions legitimately. But I think whilst we're on this pathway and we're on this trajectory, I think it's important to see what other authorities are doing as well.
You for that advice. Um, Peter, could I ask you to be as brief as possible, please?
I can, Chair. One of mine was on a similar point, which was the risk of a large housing developer saying, well, we've got a woodland here. And every development we build in the country, we're going to improve this one woodland we've built in Tunbridge Wells, Chipping Norton, wherever you might decide to to put. The other point, thinking about it, ju- just a completely separate point, is then on this being a market and us then wanting to be a player in the market. What conversations have we had around the other um public services with significant land ownership in the district? Yorkshire Water, C R T are ones that come to mind. Network Rail may be another, but obviously we don't want to go in competition against Yorkshire Water selling these um points. Putting, uh, being a player in that market may mean we have the most diverse amount of habitats available to us. And being in a partnership with all these other public sector landowners may mean that when somebody has to replace a a likely unit, we have something nearby ready to offer and to use them. So what conversations we had to ensure that Yorkshire Water aren't going to set up exactly the same and start selling their bits of land alongside ours?
So, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose ultimately we've got no control over Yorkshire Water if they want to go ahead and set up their own habitat bank, but we have been in discussion with them. I mean, one of the things we're in a process of doing is setting up what's called a matchmaking map. We're trying to produce an interactive map that developers can see early doors before they even submit a planning application that shows potential sites where they could deliver their off-site biodiversity units. That's effectively trying to start that conversation really early. That's effectively trying to start that conversation really early between developers and wherever it might be um ultimately delivered. As part of that process, we have been talking to Yorkshire Wildlife Trust um and the R S P B to see, and actually Yorkshire Water, to see whether they want to to feature their land on that map as well. So we have started some of those conversations. Um regarding Network Rail and Canal Rivers Trust, we haven't had that conversation with them yet. But I think it's very important, we start this process off looking at our own land and immediate like-minded partners we already work well with before we expand it too widely. I think from our point of view, the priority is to deliver biodiversity units on local councillor own land fundamentally, isn't it? And and Wildlife Trust land and R S P B who already work with us on on nature areas. Okay.
You for that, councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. Um yeah, just going back to paragraph twenty-two, it's saying um the the units should be, well, it's it's these four four places, but there's mention of Leeds Habitat Network. Um I'm just wondering in terms of the existing network, but then where where's been identified to increase that? Um and have you got a map available with all of that on?
Yep, good point. I mean, we've um it's called the Natural Environment Map on one of our webpages. It's the biodiversity and planning webpage. So there's a natural environment map hosted on there, which then shows the Leeds Habitat Network. Um so that'll give you a good idea of the amount of land included and everywhere it covers. Um we're going through the process of reviewing that and updating it at the moment as part of the L P U one process. Um but it won't look significantly different to what you can see on there at the moment. So what we're saying through policy is if you're going to deliver biodiversity units off-site, we want you to live them in key strategic areas for biodiversity. So we've said designated sites as per paragraph twenty-two. But we're also saying, yes, you're right, the Leeds Habitat Network and immediately adjacent to it. Uh and you'll see that Leeds Habitat Network is quite extensive. It covers, it goes through all the wards in the district, picks up a lot of the watercourses, small watercourses as well as main rivers. So I think that's a really useful starting point and part of that hierarchy of priorities. Does that help?
Yeah, so I mean, it's it's basically the works ongoing with that, isn't it? Because I mean, like, I've I've managed to get it up. Um I can't see that there's that much to, for example, connect um the, oh, what do you call it? Mean with trail up with the rest of the city. Um I don't, I'm not entirely sure how we go about doing that, but there is like, you know, a little stream that runs through there that could be looked at. Um so, yeah, like it's concerning that sites haven't already been identified that can, that can mean that these um these uh units can be used in the area where the majority of development is coming forward.
I think you're right to say that's work in progress and it's maybe something we could look at in more detail in a workshop um sort of environment. Uh.
I'm not asking for workshops on it. I just, I just like the work to be done.
Okay, so thank you very much for all your contributions on that. And it I think the quality of debate reflects the importance of the content of this paper. Um I think it's good that it's come to D P P at this point, but clearly there'll be many more iterations for us to discuss. Have you any idea, Martin, when when we will be visiting this subject again?
So so Chair, um subject to um Toby emailing round. Um we're we're looking at changing the next D P P date, which I think was earmarked in September after executive board. And I think we do need that to be before executive board because we've got some executive board items to be considered at D P P. So the suggestion is we have that on Tuesday, the nineteenth of September um for the exec board on Wednesday, the twentieth of September. So this item would come back to that Tuesday, nineteenth September meeting.
That's fine. And hopefully people will be able to adjust to that date at this point. That's good. Thank you very much. So can I thank you all for a really very good debate on that area? Thank you for your contributions. Uh we'll now have a five-minute break and return for the workshop, uh if you're able to do that. Thank you very much, everybody.